Welcome, City Council. Good to see you again. Thank you for your hard work on Saturday. Welcome, Chris. Welcome, city staff and for all the people who've joined us here live. Thank you for being here. Thank you for everyone who's joining us via YouTube. It's great to have you along as well. It is 7:00 and this meeting of the Waverly City Council, a regular meeting being held on Monday, February 5 at 7:00 PM, is called to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, council. You have in front of you the proposed agenda. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented. Second.
Thank you. That's a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. That's unanimous at 7-0. Council, you have in front of you the minutes from the meeting held on January 20, 2024. That was a budget work session. You also have in front of you the minutes from January 22, 2024. So can I have a motion to approve?
I'll move approval of the minutes from the January 20, 2024 budget work session and the January 22, 2024 regular meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. This is also a voice vote. Is there any discussion? May I hear none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? 7-0. That's unanimous. Dr. Rothie, would you please introduce the guest council person you've chosen for this month?
I'd be happy to, and I have to give partial credit to Councilwoman Myers because she and Chris had talked earlier, but the dates did not work out. So Chris Knudsen is our guest this month. He'll be with us for the first two meetings of the month, and he is the Chief Marketing Officer at Workburg, and he's also a previous board president for the Chamber of Commerce. So welcome. I don't know if you want to say anything else about your subject.
Probably not. Probably not. Thank you for the opportunity, though.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Knudsen. We'll turn now to item F. We'll go into a series of public hearings. Friends, this is the date, time, and place for a public hearing to approve Resolution 24-12, a resolution reviewing and approving plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Rolling Hills Water Main Loop, a 2024 project. The mayor and city council will entertain any comments. After all comments, this hearing will be declared closed, and then following action will be considered. Ms. Guyer, the city clerk, have you received any written or oral comments?
I have not, Your Honor.
Thank you. To the audience, are there any public comments? Mr. John Meyer.
Yes, I'm John Meyer. I live at 1300 Shepherd Avenue here in Waverly. I wanted to comment about this project and also the next project that's coming up, and it really relates to some information I received on Friday that the engineering department in the city of Waverly has been placed on administrative leave and is, there's consideration being given to eliminating the department. This water project was designed and carried through the letting process by the city engineer's office. It was not done with a consultant. It's through to the point, it's been bid. After the bidding process, there are a lot of steps that need to happen in order to get the thing under construction. Contract prepared, bond prepared, it goes to the contractor, reviewed, when they come back, pre-construction meeting scheduled, and then finally a notice to proceed can be given. Also, the project is a water project, which means it's operating under a Department of Natural Resources permit that was, is required to be applied, I mean, the permit requires a licensed professional engineer to make the permit for any water improvement, no matter if it's not just strictly maintenance, any new extension or anything requires a DNR permit, and it's state law, that that has to be prepared by a licensed engineer. Also, the project has to be inspected and finally tested and signed off by the owner, and in this case, that inspection and testing and sign-off would have been done by the city engineering department. I am very concerned that if we don't have a city engineering department, who's going to do that? How's that going to be arranged? Who's going to be the professional that indeed signs off on that on the end? That's my concern with the project and hope that you will consider that in your considerations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Are there any other comments? Any other comments on Resolution 2412? Would any member of the council like to make a motion?
I will move to approve Resolution 24-12, a resolution reviewing and approving plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Rolling Hills Water Main Loop 2024 project.
Second.
Thank you. I forgot to close the public meeting, so consider it closed. Is there any discussion, council? You have a motion and a second in front of you. Any discussion? You appear ready to vote. This will be a roll call vote. Carla?
Wolf? Yes. Rothie?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Drinkhouse?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
That was 7-0, unanimous vote. Thank you very much. We move now to Resolution 1A. This is Resolution 2413, a resolution awarding the Rolling Hills Water Main Loop project to Denver Underground and Grading Incorporated. Can I have a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 24-13, a resolution awarding the Rolling Hills Water Main Loop project to Denver Underground and Grading Incorporated of Denver, Iowa, for the bid amount of $54,056.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. Do you have a motion in front of you, council? Do you have any discussion?
I'm pleasantly pleased to see the 15 bids we received. It makes for very competitive pricing.
Yeah. I should point out, there are also pictures in the packet that, you know, show aerials and describe what's going on. Any other discussion? You appear ready to vote. This will be a roll call vote. Carla?
Rothie?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Drinkhouse?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
That was unanimous at 7-0. I'm on item 1B, which is Resolution 2414, a resolution approving an acquisition of permanent water main easement, temporary construction easement compensation to Wells Hollow Landscaping, a limited liability corporation, for the loss of nursery trees and compensation to GLSW LLC for crop loss. Can I have a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 24-14, a resolution approving an acquisition of permanent water main easement, temporary construction easement, $2,000 compensation to Wells Hollow Landscaping LLC for the loss of nursery trees, and $500 compensation to GLSW LLC for crop loss.
Second.
Thank you very much. Do you have any more discussion? You appear ready to vote. This will be a roll call vote. Carla?
Myers?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Drinkhouse?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
That was unanimous at 7-0. I'm on item 2. This is another public hearing. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing to review and approve the Baskins Creek Trail Bridge Replacement 2025, project plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost. The mayor and city council will entertain any comments. After all comments, the hearing will be declared closed, and the following action will be considered. Ms. Guyer, have you received any written or oral comments?
I have not, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this? Would you tell us your name and address, sir?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm Harvey Olfers. My wife Jane and I reside in Waterloo, Iowa. We own the property that the trestle is located on. I just wanted to tell you that Justin McLown from your group has done a fine job of meeting with my wife and myself on several occasions to review it, had the engineering staff talk to us. I've met with the people who've done the drilling for bedrock and things like that, they've done a fine job, and especially working with us. I would like to say I'm not opposed to this project. I would just assume it'd start as soon as possible so that our farming operations of hay and grazing in the back could continue after the work is done and the structure's in place and fencing's repaired. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other discussion? Mr. John Meyer.
Again, John Meyer, 1300 Shepherd Avenue in Waverly. I wanted to reiterate, basically reiterate the concern over the procedural documents after this letting process. This project is different. In other words, it was done by, designs were done by a consultant, but it was carried through the bidding process by the engineering department. And again, those documents that are going to need to be prepared expeditiously to get the project going without delay. This has a little bit, another little wrinkle with it in that, actually a couple, in that there are trees that need to be removed in the construction zone, and they need to be removed during, you know, during the month of March, basically, to comply with the National Environmental Protection Act requirements. They're, need to be felled before or during that timeframe so that they don't provide a potential nesting site for some endangered species. If you don't do it in that window, it really, really causes problems and could cause delays. So that's very important that this paperwork get done through and everything within the calendar that was presented in the agenda memo. The other thing about this is that you have on this, on your agenda, the approval of an engineering services agreement for the construction-related services with WHKS. That covers only a portion of the required construction inspection or construction observation. I believe the scope of services during the 60-day construction window, they're only budgeting to visit the site, I think, 16 times. The day-to-day work on most of the project, in other words, the trail, the clearing and grubbing, everything that's not related specifically to the bridge structure was to be done by the city engineering staff. And if there is no city engineering staff, that's got to fall to somebody, and I would assume that it would be WHKS, which means that that $36,500 fee is going to go up considerably. If the number of visits go from 16 to roughly 60, you know, do the math, that's two to three times or more than three, more than twice, could be as much as three times as much. So that is, you know, additional funds that's going to have to come out of, of the project fund or be generated somewhere. And so I have a concern again about if the engineering department disappears, what is going to happen? Again, related to the expeditious felling and taking care of the trees, and then also the extra cost to the city for construction observation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Are there any other comments on the Baskins Creek Trail Bridge Replacement? I see no one rising, so this closes the public hearing. I'd ask, council, does anyone?
I'll move approval of Resolution 2415, a resolution reviewing and approving plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Baskins Creek Trail Bridge Replacement 2024 project.
Second. Thank you very much. Any discussion?
This is very minor, but we've got the wrong year on the easement signed by the Olfers. It's got 2019.
Thank you. Good catch.
I didn't know if James had any comments about how we would handle, if we did decide to reallocate engineering staff, how would we handle this sort of internal inspection?
Well, there'll be some inspections done by some staff. We're still working through what that looks like, what the position is. We're posting positions hopefully today. So we're well aware of the concerns, but we're still working through that issue. And as we said, we have WHKS, we have to fall back. There's funding secured for that if need be, so I'm not concerned about the project going forward.
Any other discussion? Mr. Jones, we can form a task force, and whether that word is pronounced creek or crick, we can deal with that later. You appear ready to vote? Ms. Guyer, this is a roll call vote.
Kangas?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Drinkhouse?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Drinkhouse?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Unanimous at 7-0. Thank you very much. I'm now on item 2A. This is a Resolution 2416, a resolution awarding the Baskins Creek Trail Bridge Replacement 2024 project to Peterson Contractors, Incorporated of Ryanbeck, Iowa, for the bid amount of Second. Thank you. Any discussion?
I just noticed that we have in our rail trail bridges fund $751,623, and the bids on this are significantly less than that. I assume that the unused amount will simply roll over until the next set of bridges that we do.
Some of that was for design services to get the bridge done, then you also have the WHKS and contract, or company contract, so the total, if you look at it, it's around $773,000. We've allocated funding from loss and CIP to cover it up to $900,000 if need be. So funding is well in place, and so if there is additional, it will go forward. We will hold that for another project, or we will simply place it back in one of the two funds where it's pulled from.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good. Any other discussion? I hear none, so you appear ready to vote. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Guyer?
Jones?
Yes.
Drinkhouse?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
That was unanimous at 7-0. I'm now on item 2B. This is Resolution 2417, which is a resolution approving the purchase of a temporary construction easement from Harvey M. and Jane M. Olfers for the Baskins Creek Trail Bridge Replacement 2024 project. May I have a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 24-17, a resolution approving the purchase of a temporary construction easement from Harvey M. and Jane M. Olfers for the Baskins Creek Trail Bridge Replacement 2024 project for the amount of $2,000.
Second. I'll give that to Dr. Rothie. There was a tie, but, thank you. Any discussion?
Just a procedural question. What, who was the staff member that actually negotiated the $2,000? Was that the city attorney?
It was a conjunction of the city attorney and myself. I've been microwaving there as well at some of the conversations, but I think a lot of it was in regards to a lease that he asked, dealing with some farming operation there.
Okay. So it was a collaborative effort with the three of you?
That's a good term, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I would like to thank Mr. Olfers for being here and reassuring us that everything was done well.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Any more discussion, council? You appear ready to vote. This will be a roll call vote. Ms. Guyer?
Drinkhouse?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
That passed unanimously, 7-0. I'm now on item 2C. This is Resolution 2418, which is a resolution approving the construction services agreement with WHKS and Company. May I have a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution 24-18, a resolution approving the construction services agreement with WHKS and Company of Mason City, Iowa, for a not-to-exceed amount of $36,500, with construction engineering services provided by WHKS and Company are primarily limited to the structural elements of the bridge.
Second. I'm going to give that to Jen. It's her first time on the minutes today. Thank you. Any discussion? You appear ready to vote. So, Ms. Guyer?
Bergen?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Drinkhouse?
Yes.
That passed unanimously at 7-0. I'm on item G. This is a time for public comments on items that are not otherwise on the agenda. Do we have any comments? Mr. John Meyer, please limit your comments to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer.
I guess I asked for clarification. The item I want to address is actually on the agenda, but when I observe these many times, there isn't given an opportunity for public people to speak about an agenda item. So I guess the item I wish, would like to address is number four on the regular business, I believe, the grant application for the additional trail bridge. So I can do it now, or I can do it then.
This is the first time this happened to me. Bill?
Your rules, you can do each one.
Oh, just like at home. Taken away, Mr. Meyer. You have five minutes.
It won't take that long. This is a, item number four on your regular business, is a grant application, and I'm one of the few that reads these things, I think. That's what I do on Sunday afternoons before council meetings, probably just like you do. Part four of the grant, of the grant application says, "Federal aid highway project development process, understanding capacity." It's part of the narrative. It says, "Does existing staff have the capacity to administer the proposed project? Has the project sponsor determined or demonstrated understanding of program rules? What strategies will be implemented to deliver the proposed project successfully?" Question mark. The response that's on this application says, "The city has completed numerous federal aid highway projects. The improvement includes both roadway and trail construction and reconstruction. The Waverly city engineer is the city's designated full-time employee to be the person in responsible charge, who will supervise all project administrative duties, oversee the work performed by the consultants and contractors, and coordinate development of the project with the Iowa DOT." In my view, approval of this application as it exists right now, if indeed the engineering department is laid off, is a misrepresentation on the application. And I guess you have to decide whether you want to approve an agreement that will be, is in flux or not. You know, if the engineer stays, I guess it's okay. If the engineer goes, I would think that that language would need to be modified to say that, you know, a consultant will be engaged or something, that the city engineer is not going to be the person in responsible charge of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. I'll respond at the time.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion? Any other people from the audience who would like to comment on any item that is not currently on the agenda? I see none. We'll move on to item H, the consent calendar. I'd welcome a motion.
Move to accept, to approve the consent calendar as is.
Second.
Thank you, council folk. Any discussion on the consent agenda, any item that wants to be pulled off? This is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That passed unanimously at 7-0. We are now finally into regular business. I'm at item I-1, which is Resolution 2419, a resolution adopting a policy for funding outside agencies. I'd welcome a motion.
I'll move that we adopt Resolution 24-19, a resolution adopting a policy for funding outside agencies.
Thank you. Can I?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. You have a motion in front of you, any discussion? And the documents are in front of you. For the sake of the people watching, it basically says that the, the council will not fund those things that the council does not have direct, a person that sits with a non-voting seat at the table. That's clear. Summary?
No, I seem to recall this was a discussion that came out of our budget meeting?
Correct, sir.
Okay.
There was NEICAC, which we do not have a board member sitting, but we were discussing, is it a true board member, or is it liaison that we were wanting? This would eliminate that as just a liaison, not a voting board member, which is not uncommon in most of our commissions. Correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, but I think a few years ago, the Iowa Supreme Court had made a ruling on, or was it the auditor, that cities had to have some say on how they use the funding on nonprofits.
I think it was more you had to pass a resolution that showed why it affected the city or was needed by the city, or substitute for things that the city would be doing or could be doing. And it was more of an explanation, so you wanted to document that within your resolution.
We'll have that coming forward as we closer to budget being approved. We'll have that resolution with all the nonprofits you do decide to approve and how they meet the needs laid out by Auditor Rob Sands, other technicals, things of that nature. So it'll be the third year we've done this, I think?
Yeah. We've done it, I just couldn't remember if it was the Supreme Court or auditor. Somebody had said something about the city has to explain taxpayer funds.
Yeah, Rob Sands sent a memo out May of 2020 outlining his concerns and how it works. We've got copies of that, we'll certainly provide you before that meeting, but it looks at what nonprofits can and can't be used for, provides examples of things that have been done incorrectly, correctly, and so we'll have all that. But that is where we're heading as we get closer to budget approval. You'll also be voting on that resolution for the nonprofit you've identified.
So the basic change would be we would add a liaison for Northeast Iowa?
Yes, ma'am.
And she mentioned, we mentioned that to her that day, and it sounded like they weren't opposed to that.
Right. It was liaison versus voting board member, which they have designated otherwise.
Okay.
For the people at home, that's the Northeast Iowa Community Action Corporation, which is the long way of saying the food shelf. Any other discussion on Resolution 2419? I hear none. You appear ready to vote? This will be a roll call vote. Ms. Guyer?
Wolf?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Drinkhouse?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
That was unanimous at 7-0. Thank you very much. We'll move on to number two, which is Resolution 2420. This is a resolution approving the professional service agreement with WHKS and Company for the 2024 Adams Parkway Bridge Inspection. I'd welcome a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 24-20, a resolution approving the professional services agreement with WHKS and Company for the not-to-exceed fee of $8,300 for the I'll move approval of Resolution 24-20, a resolution approving the professional services agreement with WHKS and Company for the not-to-exceed fee of $8,300 for the 2024 Adams Parkway Bridge inspection and for the new criteria related to calculating the load rating for five structures on the city's minor arterial road system and the sanitary sewer force main that is attached to Adams Parkway Bridge will also be inspected.
Thank you, sir. Brian Jones, are you? All right. Any discussion?
When was the last time that we had the Adams Parkway Bridge inspected? I thought that was fairly recent.
It wasn't very long ago, and we had a bit of that main that was hanging, and so we had to do repairs as well, but that has not been that long ago. I think it's due just to be done again.
Okay.
My understanding is it's an aging bridge, so inspections need to be a little bit more frequent than.
Right. The Parkway Bridge was just redected, so.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Good shape right now. It's just the.
Underside.
Underside, the sanitary sewer force main, to make sure that is still attached and doing well, so.
Yeah, the bridge should be in good shape because we put a lot of money into fixing that up. So, that's why I was a little surprised that we were doing this inspection again. But I understand if it's for the stuff that's hanging under the bridge, to make sure that that's still hanging under the bridge, that's a reasonable reason for doing it.
As it states, part of the mandatory biannual federal bridge inspection program, so it goes by quickly.
Yeah.
And so, here we are again.
Any more discussion? Ms. Guyer, this is a roll call vote.
Rothie.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Drankow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Drankow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Drankow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
That was a unanimous vote. Thank you. I'm now on item four. We have some corrections to make. I'm going to read it as is and then welcome corrections.
If you would, sir, I'd like to just interrupt. I think we need to just pull this completely. Once we started digging into it, it's kind of a mess. It's committing us to funds we haven't currently committed to. It commits us to funds in the fiscal year that this bridge will be done prior to. It's simply not acceptable, and we cannot go forward with it. If you dig through, you'll see what I'm talking about. We have not allocated $92,000 for engineering in the fiscal '25 budget we are about to build, and these bridges will be done as you approve Saturday to go forward in the fiscal year coming up, not the fiscal year after, so, which is fiscal '26 when this states. So, as you go through, there's pieces of it, it's just, it is just kind of a mess. So, I do not want to waste your time. It was kind of a last minute. We were trying to get this knocked out, but we'll try again another year, but this is simply not going to go well. It'll take so much time to redo it. So, with your permission, I'd like to have it pulled.
I will agree to pulling Resolution 2422 off the agenda. Is there any objection from the council? I see none. We'll move on to item five. All right. This is the second reading of Ordinance 1139 and Ordinance amending ordinance numbers 569, 585, 609, 638, 664, 733, 791, 853, 866, 892, 931, 736, 932, 978, 1025, 1053, 1060, 1066, 1080, and 1137. And, "Providing that general property shall no longer be divided on certain property located within the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Area in the city of Waverly, County of Breamer, State of Iowa. This is removing non-taxable property from the division of revenue." May I have a motion, please?
I will move approval of the second reading of Ordinance 1139 as read by the mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. Any discussion? I see none. Are you ready to vote?
Did you need a second?
I got one from.
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just thank you for reading that.
This is a roll call vote, so I'll call on Ms. Guyer.
Jones.
Yes.
Drankow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Unanimous at seven to zero. Item number six, this is the first reading of Ordinance 1140 and Ordinance amending the Waverly Municipal Code, Section 105.4.10, regarding parking regulations. May I have a motion, please?
I'll move approval of the first reading of Ordinance 1140 and Ordinance amending the Waverly Municipal Code, Section 105.4.10, regarding parking regulations to add a new subsection, 59, changing the parking regulations on Sixth Avenue Northwest between Fifth Street Northwest and Seventh Street Northwest to no parking on the north side of the street.
Second.
Thank you, Julie. Any discussion? Let's, can we start with Bill and just what the heck's going on here?
Sixth Avenue is a street that is only two blocks long. It's north of the Stratton Building. Most of the houses are on the north side of the street, and they're small lots with driveways and mailboxes, and so there's not really a way to park on that side. And there's going to be somebody probably building another duplex there, too. So, we thought the south side has hardly anything, there's lots of room to park, so that it's going to be easier for people to just keep on the south side and not be on the north side.
Yeah, then come the rezon, or.
Yeah, that's a real word.
Rezoning for, actually.
It's a Board of Adjustments.
Yeah, it comes to, was it Board of Adjustments or planning zoning for the?
Yeah, I think the lot is a little short.
Yeah, it was for the duplex that was purchased, and they were looking at wanting to, they were worried about parking and the availability for parking, and so that's kind of essentially coming from that board as a recommendation.
So, the neighbors, the property owners also were requesting it?
Yeah, some of the property owners, the landlord, I mean, the people that own properties there. I think everybody kind of agrees with it because they really don't park that there anyway. They're worried about the new one coming in. That might cause people to park on that north side.
This came up in November when we had an application to the Board of Adjustments for a duplex to be put into one lot, to remove an older house, and part of our discussion at that time was the parking and the issue with the driveways, mailbox, and everything on the north side. I talked to Justin and a couple of the snowplow drivers about that street, and they felt that it would be much more comfortable and easy for them to work by doing that. So, when we had our meeting in November, that it was a matter of during our discussion, we said we'd approach the city about doing this, eliminating parking on the north side. That homeowner and the adjacent property owner didn't have an issue with it. We will be having this. The homeowner has come up with a finalized set of plans. We did not take action in November because the plans, they didn't have a detailed plan of what they were going to build, and we didn't want to approve anything without the plans in hand. We're scheduled for a meeting next Monday, and they did provide us a set of plans.
Thank you. That was Mr. Lampy from the Board of Adjustments. Any other discussion, council? This is a roll call vote, so Ms. Guyer.
Drankow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Drankow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Drankow.
Yes.
That was unanimous at seven to zero. Item J, these are reports from the boards and commissions. You have a report in front of you, the minutes of the Historic Preservation Commission. Is there anyone here from the commission? You also have in front of you, what?
No, sir.
No. You also have in front of you the Waverly Senior Center calendar. Any comments? I hear none. Staff reports. James?
We have a few brief ones tonight, sir.
Please.
With the nicer weather, Yardway site will open this afternoon from 1:00 to 3:00, Wednesday from 1:00 to 3:00, and Friday from 1:00 to 3:00. Have you got any sticks or leaves or brush or anything? We're not doing any other, compost won't be available on the chips or any of those items, but just anybody's doing some cleanup.
Garrett, we going to go golfing?
What's that? I'm sorry.
Are we going to go golfing?
Golf course is planning on opening on Wednesday. Will be open Wednesday and Thursday. We are allowing carts, so apparently the ground is not soft at all, so we should be good to go. Science Club Tree Sale is live, so if you haven't seen a brochure yet, we've got them kind of spread out throughout businesses in town. Otherwise, check out the Waverly Trees Forever Facebook page, or the school has it on their website as well. We also have it on the city website. They're ranging anywhere from priced from $30 to $60, and the deadline to order is March 1st. One thing new this year is Trees Forever is kicking in. We're letting people know if they want to donate a tree to the new area for the Breamer County Fairgrounds. Trees Forever will match up to 25 trees that gets donated to the fairgrounds. So, if anyone wants to get two for one, there you go. And then, one other Trees Forever note, a memorial was sent to us from Gertrude Bachman for just under $2,200 for trees to be placed at the new middle school just outside of town. So, we will, sorry, I mean outside of town, just the north, north part of town there.
Elementary school, you mean?
I'm sorry?
The elementary school?
Correct.
You said middle school, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
And so, yeah, so we will be planting a tree planting out there as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
Is that the earliest that the golf course has ever been open to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, yes, and I'm going to guess that it's definitely the earliest it's been open. Yep. So, we'll see, we'll see if we make it more than two or three days and then be closed up until March.
You're just trying to get over 30,000. I know what you're up to there.
Forget, sorry.
Jerry Queen at Fort Queens are opening, so.
Wow.
Spring is here.
Spring.
Chief, do you want to comment on the Citizens Academy that starts Thursday?
Sure, the Citizens Academy starts Thursday.
Yeah, that's such a great program, just so happy about that. When do you think the next one will be for people who didn't get their apps in?
Yeah, this year was a very unique year. We had about double the pages we ever had. We had to turn around, turn down about 10 citizens that wanted to participate, so we were full. What we did is let them know by email that they would be first come, given priority for next year. And so, with that said, when we put the announcement out, you may already have only two or three spots open if all of those are willing to participate next year. So, very, very good turnout.
Thank you, chief. City Council comments. Councilperson Bergen.
So, I just have to say that I've been watching the news lately. I saw that the city administrator in Marshalltown lasted all of four months before leaving. I saw that in Fort Dodge, there's discussion of franchise fees in response to budget shortfalls or budget pressures there. So, I just want to say, you know, it's tough all over, but I think that our city staff is doing a great job of managing difficult situations, so I'd like to thank their hard work, especially with putting the budget together.
Thank you. Councilperson Jones.
I would just like to echo Brian's comments. City staff has put a lot of time into the budget and trying to plan, not for just this year, but the coming years.
Thank you. Councilperson Myers.
Just a reminder, as we heard from the Human Equity and Diversity Commission last week, that they are starting this program of block parties for this summer, and the deadline for people to sign up for that is on Thursday.
Thank you. Councilperson Wolf.
Ditto to what Julie said.
Councilperson Rothie.
Nothing from me.
Councilperson Drankow.
Okay, well, since the budget session that we had Saturday morning, I've been contacted by a number of people asking questions about the different segments of the budget and how it all fits together. I've written up a very short summary that is a very gross simplification of how everything works, because I know it's considerably more complicated than that, but I would like to just read it, and if I have things in here that are not accurate, I would appreciate that, you know, telling me. So, I'm not telling people the wrong information, okay? And remember, this is a gross simplification, so don't get into little details. The major revenue source for the city is from real estate taxes. The county assessor determines what your property is worth, the assessed value. This value is then reduced by a number of factors to come up with a taxable value, which is what is used to calculate the real estate tax that you have to pay. State law limits the tax levy for city operations to $8.10 per $1,000 of taxable valuation, and this is what we refer to as the 810 levy. So, if your house has a taxable value, taxable value of $100,000, your tax would be $810 on this levy. For the last several years, the state has imposed a rollback, which limits the increase in real estate taxes due as a result of an increase in the property's value. In theory, this may be a good idea, especially for people on a fixed income who have owned their houses for many years and have seen substantial increases in assessed valuation. If the taxable valuation of a property is rolled back by 10%, the taxes that the city can collect under the 810 levy is reduced by 10%. The city, however, still has to pay its bills, make payroll, et cetera, which are all subject to inflation. A huge rollback, as we had this year, means that the city cannot collect enough taxes under the 810 levy to maintain the same level of expenditures as prior years, much less build up reserves for a rainy day. It is not good financial practice, and I assume it's against the law, to fund operating expenses and reserves with borrowing. In addition, a few years ago, the state lowered the taxable value of some commercial property that promised to make payments to cities from state tax revenue to backfill lost tax revenue to cities to make the cities whole. Over the last couple of years, that payment has been reduced, until this year it was entirely eliminated. If the state had continued to make this payment as promised, the city would be receiving substantial funds from the state that would have softened the blow. There is some city spending that is not subject to the 810 levy. For example, enterprise funds, such as water and sewer services, are funded through user fees and not tax levies. Expenditures for many street projects are largely funded from a combination of road use tax funds, a gas tax made available from the state, and revenue from the 1% local option sales tax. The funds for other capital projects, such as replacing the rail trail bridges, can be funded through general obligation bonds. There are limits on how large a project can be funded in this way. Borrowing for projects greater than this limit, such as funding for a new swimming pool, must be approved by a citizen vote. The total general obligation or GO bonds outstanding at any one time, I'm almost done, cannot exceed 5% of the city's taxable valuation. We have a voluntary self-imposed limit of 80% of this limit and a maximum bond repayment period of 10 years. Those are limits that we installed ourselves, voluntary limits. A few years ago, we were right up against this limit, but the current total of outstanding bonds is about 55% of this limit. Payments on these bonds are from future property tax revenue, and the bond payments increase the levy rate. Okay, how did I do?
It's pretty close. I'll give it.
Okay.
It's pretty close.
All right. And I assume that I am correct, that you cannot borrow for operating expenses.
You shouldn't.
I know you shouldn't.
There are certain things you can, there are smaller items you can, it's not advised as far as like personnel payroll. I don't think so.
Not a good thing.
No.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Kengis, thank you for chairing on Saturday, and do you have any comments today?
My only comment would be congratulations to our couple wrestlers that won state titles, and I'm previous mayor.
The Waverly City Council will now move into executive session. Thank you for joining us, but we're going to have a little talk amongst ourselves.
Need a motion?
That's right, of course I do. Good catch.
Move that the council goes into closed executive session to discuss collective bargaining strategy for impending negotiations as provided by Section 20.17, subsection 3 of the Code of Iowa.
Thank you, Kengis. Thank you, Bergen. Can I, that's a roll call vote to go into executive session, if I recall. So Carla?
Bergen?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Kengis?
Yes.
Drankow?
Yes.
Raffi?
Yes.
And Wolf?
Yes.
That passed unanimously. We will enter into executive session. Thank you, everybody.